United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I ask everyone to please silence their cell phones and other devices, and we'll move on. And item three is recognition of guests and special presentations. See, Ms. Hammond is here. And I think that's about it. So glad to have you. And we'll go to item number four, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? All right, nobody signed up for public comment. All right, we'll move right on to item number five, which is consent agenda discussion, considering taking action related to the payment accounts, bills, invoices, payroll, payroll requests for reimbursement, requests for other payments, transfer of funds, and amendments. Under five point one, emergency purchases, there were none this time. And under five point two is ratification of some of the invoices that we had already approved, and they had been paid. So I would entertain a motion on five point two is ratification.
Yeah, just make sure that I understand that these, the ratification is a new item here. And basically what it amounts to is that we have already approved these, and under our purchasing policy and payment policy, both of no material change in the invoice from what we've already approved, and then it's already been pre-approved for payment, and we're simply ratifying those payments. These will may or may not occur each month, but just depends on the circumstances. So with that, I'll make the motion that we pay, or that we ratify our payments under five point two, amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Domine. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. If we pay our bills in the amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that motion carries. Five point three is our regular bills that we need to pay, and I would entertain a motion that we pay those bills.
I'll make the motion that we approve our payment of bills in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Domine, we pay our bills in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Do I have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point four is our district credit cards. And I've looked them over, and I think most everybody has. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary on those.
Yeah, I don't see anything. I'll make a motion that we approve our credit card payments in an amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion by Commissioner Domine, we pay our credit card bills in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point five is our contract payments.
Again, I'll make the motion that we approve our contract payments in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion by Commissioner Domine, we pay our contract payments in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Do I have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Five point six is our urgent purchases, and this is for Delta Industries and Services and Supply. I think that was for some repair to our bunker gear in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, and I would entertain a motion for that.
Yeah, I guess just, I'm sorry, I was just.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Arnold?
Not just going to comment that, no, it was, it was brought to the attention of a couple of the board members and was pre-approved, so.
Right.
My procedures, yes.
Yes, according to policy, it was.
Yes, it was.
Yes. Okay, so have a motion by Commissioner Arnold, we'll pay that in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. All right, item five point seven, I think is just for information only. There's no approval needed for that. That's the payment of our Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas and Verizon accounts. So, all right. And item number six will be approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Having reviewed those minutes and submit those for approval by the Board, make the motion that we adopt them, adopt the minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Have a motion by Commissioner Domine that we approve the Board minute. So the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item number seven, Executive Director's Report under seven point one.
So as usual, you have the written report. I am not going to repeat everything in it. Instead, I will just pick out a few highlights. And the first one is that following strong collaboration between staff and the Board, and stringent review by the Board, we have now a adopted budget for next fiscal year. So this, the district is in a good position to begin the new year on October one. I, as you remember a little while back, our own Assistant Executive Director Larry Knox got the Certified Public Manager designation. He now has also achieved and passed all the tests for the Certified Government Finance Officer designation. So he's getting ready to put them all up on the wall in his office.
Congratulations.
Yep.
The year, this fiscal year financially for the district looks very good compared to the initial budget and the subsequently amended budget. Revenue, with all certainty, is going to come in better than what we expected at the beginning of the year. And expenses, with all certainty, is going to come in less than what we expected. So as Keith will review with you in a little bit, we are hoping that we have improved upon the initial budget to the tune of about two point five million dollars. And he will review the deficit. And that's really all I have that I wanted to highlight, unless you have any questions.
I think I just want to make note that we were expecting to have a deficit against revenue against expenses, and this improvement is actually just diminishes that deficit, right?
Correct. The original deficit that we projected was about three million dollars. And now after the improvements, we now project the deficit of close to half a million dollars.
So I just don't want it to be interpreted as extra money.
No, it's not. It's still a deficit, but a very small deficit.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Under seven point two, discuss considering taking action on Smith County E S D two's investment policy review and renewal. In accordance with paragraph fourteen, the district's investment policy investment officers report that the eighty-ninth Regular Session of the Texas Legislature enacted no changes to chapter twenty-two fifty-six of the Government Code, Public Funds Investment Act. In accordance with the paragraph fifteen, the policy of the Smith County E S D two Board is required to conduct an annual review and renewal of the investment policy for the twenty twenty-five renewal. The investment officers recommend one change, removal of the U B S Financial Services Incorporated from the list of authorized broker-dealers, no other revision or proposed other than updating adoption date in the policy footer and reflect the Board action. And, Randy, if you'd like to speak on it, go ahead.
Yeah, so it, yeah, it is just pretty simple that we are no longer going to be using U B S Financial Services as a broker-dealer, so we're going to strike them off our list. We won't have one on there. And then the other one's just simply stating that we adopted the policy on this date. So with that, I'd make the motion that the Board would adopt the renewed investment policy incorporating those limited changes.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Domine that the Board adopt the renewed investment policy, incorporating the limited changes outlined above. Have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Seven point three is discussing considering take action on the proposed renewal of Smith County E S D two's abatement policy. And that too, and the staff recommends that the Board authorize the Board President to execute the renewal of the tax abatement policy and direct staff to provide executed documents to the Tyler Economic Development Council. Is there, anybody needs to speak on that, Eric?
Basically, there are no changes in the policy except for the dates through which the policy is valid. We have added two years to the existing one, and that's really, I need your signature, and then I'll forward that over to the Development Council.
All right, I'll entertain our motion on seven point three.
Make the motion that the, we adopt the policy as submitted, and that we would authorize our Board President to execute the renewal tax abatement policy and direct staff to provide the S P D document to the Tyler Economic Development Council.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Domine, you have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item number eight, financial reports. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Commissioners. Typically, I would review the budget versus actual comparison, but because item ten, we have a budget reallocation, which will basically change everything on this report, I just didn't think it would be a good use for our time to review this report, other than I did want to bring your attention to something. So we moved the schedule up to have these finalized for this Board meeting. So typically, we have some things recorded by that date. So for example, sales tax, if you look, is showing fourteen point seven million. We have since recorded an additional one point three million that actually we received after the date we finalized this report. So again, because we moved the data, some of the things that we historically record here have not revealed themselves, and I think the sales tax is a good example. But again, because we're actually going to have, hopefully, the Boards would approve that budget reallocation, I just didn't see this would be a good use of our time to go through this, since all the budgets are changing, and essentially, nothing really jumps off the page to me that concerns me. But I'm available to discuss.
Nothing that's been, that hadn't been reported in the past, right? It's nothing new out of this, and the, what we're going to do later is just going to be essentially reconciling.
Indeed.
The end of the year, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions over any of it.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Okay, thank you, Keith. All right. Item nine, discuss considering take action on the attached fiscal year twenty-five financial statement audit proposal engagement letter, investment performance audit letter, and agreed upon procedure investments letter received from Squires and Company. And who's going to speak on that one? Go ahead, sir.
So we're trying to get a head start on the F Y twenty twenty-five audit compared to historical years. And so what I've included is the engagement letters for the audit, the performance audit, and the agreed upon procedure relating to the investments. So our goal, or Squire's goal, is to hopefully issue their financial statement reports no later than the March twenty twenty-six Board meeting. But we are asking the Board to approve Squires and Company as the district auditor, and to authorize the Executive Director, Eric, to sign any associated engagement letters. And also include a little schedule that shows the cost increases from the previous years.
So the total cost of the audit with everything is forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, sir.
All right, I entertain a motion that we approve Squires and Company as a district auditor, and authorize the Executive Director to sign any associated engagement letters. So may I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold? I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item ten, discuss considering take action on the proposed fiscal twenty-five budget reallocations, increases, and decreases.
That would be me again.
Go ahead, Mr. Keith.
So what we're asking the Board to approve is a budget realignment, and we do this for a couple of reasons. One, the auditor likes to see us align our budget to more closely reflect what our actual revenues or expenditures are going to be. But also, it's better transparency and more accurate reporting to the public and the Board. So I have gone through this and worked with the team to kind of develop estimates through the end of the years. We currently have budgeted twenty-four point seven million dollars in revenues. We anticipate potentially recording one point three million more than the twenty-four point seven. We also budgeted twenty-four point four million approximately in expenses, and we plan on essentially spending less, approximately one point two, three million. So that produces a net two million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars reduction in the budget to deficit. So as you pointed out, Mr. Domine, we started the year with essentially the operating fund, a three million dollar deficit, and this will, we'll still have a deficit going forward, and we'll actually be utilizing fund budget, but hopefully closer to about a half a million dollars.
So we're increasing the revenues by one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, decreasing expenditures by one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, and producing a net of two million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars reduction in the budgeted deficit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff recommends that the Board approve the proposed budget reallocations and amendments as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the Board would approve the proposed budget reallocation amendments as presented.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Domine, you have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item eleven, Director of Human Resources's report, workforce injuries, Miss Eric.
Yes, there's actually been a correction on that since I submitted.
Yes, there's actually been a correction on that since I submitted it. The day after I submitted the report, we did end up getting one work-related injury, and it was heat-related. But that person has also been released without restrictions on nine eighteen. And then an update on the hip injury, he had surgery on the thirty-first. We're thinking that he'll be able to return to work as of October twenty-second. So that, of course, the doctor will have to review it again, but that's what we're looking at.
Anybody got any questions, Miss Sherry, on work-related injuries?
So the heat-related incident was, uh, was it on scene somewhere or was it outside? Was it?
All right. Anything else on your human resources report, Miss Sherry?
On the H R report, you have that before you. I did want to point just a few things out on it. We have hired fifteen firefighters. Thirteen still remain on the list for eligibility. The firefight orientation will start October first through the fifteenth. And promotional testing, we're accepting internal candidates for driver and lieutenant currently. And as of today, we have ten firefighter and four lieutenant that are proposing to test. Administrative staffing, we did have that position filled with attempt to hire. That position didn't work out, so we are still actively looking for someone for that role.
One week.
Yeah, yeah. And then open enrollment did close September seventh, and we do have sixty-nine employees enrolled in the P P O plan and sixty-three enrolled in the H S A H M O plan. So it's about fifty-fifty. Yeah. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
All right. Item twelve, Community Outreach Coordinators Report.
Good evening. So I think I ended my last report with saying that we were probably finished with our Q U I E T weeks because we have stepped into, um, preparing for fire prevention, football season, community helpers. So the guys, um, after, well, our team, I should say. I think they had more than eight hundred calls during the month of August and then have begun adding in all of those public relations events, being out in the community. We've had some fantastic opportunities to partner with Cavenders, Camp Gladiator, Breckenridge Village. They have really just been out there promoting the brand, promoting the team, and done a fantastic, very professional job, and so I'm very proud of them for that. And then, like I said, we're just getting on the calendar with all of those local organizations, mostly school districts, some private schools, to start talking fire prevention, working with the Fire Marshal's Office to get their materials out there. So we're just excited to get that ramped up, and like I said, we've been out at Friday football cheering on the teams. And if you haven't seen, we have done a lot of work with our local media recently and have received nothing but positive feedback on the moves that you all have approved that we're doing. So just all the work that's been going on to that has been fantastic.
Might want to mention, too, that we covered the triathlon a couple of weeks ago, too, that they had out at Lake Tyler, or it started out there. So, anyway. All right. Thirteen, Assistant Executive Directors Report on Support Services. Larry?
Commissioners, you have my main report in front of you. I'll just add a few things. We have found a new facilities manager. We're hoping he'll start next week. We're very excited. I think lots of potential with this candidate, and so we'll be happy to have him on, hopefully, starting Monday. We are still looking for a fleet preventative maintenance technician as well as our procurement and logistics manager. Our current logistics manager will be leaving us October the third. So that search is underway. We've had several interviews, and we plan on having several more. An update on the auction, we have proceeds of around ninety-six thousand, approximately seventy-five thousand to the E S D after commission and dispersments to the V F Ds that participate in the auction. So that is clearing out. Other than that, my report is in front of you, and you'll see that we do have a project status report that will be starting to be produced for the board members for Jamestown. And just a quick update on where we're at with that, we're having a conversation about contract today, and we've already had all the kickoff meetings with all of the relevant subcontractors and contractor. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do they have any questions? Charles, you got it? Okay, all right. Item thirteen.
I'm sorry, I highlighted one I forgot to ask it. We're doing some work on one of our towers. So you're calling it a tower rebuild?
These are refurbishments from storm damage that are still underway. So it is just replacing damaged equipment and actually getting us back up to one hundred percent where we were.
Own the tower, not the tower itself.
That's correct. It's the equipment on the tower.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen point two, discuss, consider and take action on S C B A pack and bottle repairs. Authorize five thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents in repairs at Metro Fire to repair the S C B A equipment.
Yes, sir. During the course of utilization, these pieces get damaged over time and wear and tear. They're collected at logistics, new packs are issued, and then the vendor comes by on a quarterly basis to pick those up, evaluate them, and issues the order of repairs that are attached. This is our contracted vendor for S C B As.
I entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion we authorize those repairs at Metro Fire to repair S C B A equipment in the amount of five thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dominique, have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Chief of Operations Report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a couple of highlights. If you go with me on the Ops report, want to point out that the CAD project is making progress. We've had several meetings, implementation meetings. Happy to report that I T now has the connection with the county server, so we're able to continue the project and moving forward. So we're making good progress in that. A lot of collaborative work with all the agencies as we move that project forward. Also had a, our quarterly chief meeting with our V F D chiefs there at headquarters and had good discussion about several different agenda items, and we're able to walk through, you know, not the least of which is some of the training and the training portals and reimbursements and things of that nature. So a real decent collaborative meeting that took place on September the eleventh. Our, uh, our assignments in the field continue. Had forty-two commercial walkthroughs and ninety-eight hydrants that were touched in the, in this report period. Also have taken delivery of the grant-supported, uh, the brush truck for Chapel Hill, one thirty-six, was delivered. You may have seen pictures of that that were shared, and we're excited about that and working with Chief Peterson and staff to get that ready for service delivery, also to get it, get it titled and all of the business of getting it ready for service. In addition, the tactical tender made it from Idaho to Texas and has delivered to our shop. So we're currently mounting tools and equipment and radios in that truck and replacement for the Troop Engine one forty-six replacement. So that tactical tender is our new concept, two thousand gallons with a, with a nice pump setup and attack lines, and it'll be a great truck for us, and we're excited about that. We did have a short deployment. The state of Texas requested us to pre-position in Bastrop for five days on Tiflis. That was, that ended and has returned. There continues to be quite an appetite of the state supporting Kerrville and the recovery that's taking place post-flooding that took place in central Texas. So I do expect more requests that are forthcoming. There've been lots of organizations that have supported that mission, ongoing, getting recovery efforts taken care of there. You do have all the service provider reports in front of you. Lots of work from the Training Division in addition related to upcoming promotional exams. Recruit class number nine. I'm proud to report that we have the fifteen that are ready to start on October the first. And all of the academy is queued up and ready to get going with that, so we're excited about that. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a comment that I appreciate the chief reports that are in here, and I'll say that, uh, Chief Peterson, thank you very much. Quite an extensive report. I appreciate it. One point for improvement.
Okay.
Black on green is really hard for me to read for some reason. I have a hard time with black on green.
We'll see if we can make some adjustments there.
I have to, have to get two pair of glasses to be able to read that.
Yep. Fair enough.
Appreciate the information from all of you.
Yeah. Uh, one question, Chief. Did we have a crew at the Troop football game the other night? Where they had an injury?
I think so. We did.
I'm not sure we did.
Okay.
I know there's a question about delayed response. So I just want to make sure we had somebody there.
Yeah, hadn't, hadn't come to me.
It wasn't from us. It wasn't on us.
Okay.
The Amos, Amos, taking some of it there.
Yeah, I had not.
I just want to make sure we were there and taking care of stuff. Okay. All right, thank you. Fourteen point two, discuss, consider and take action on the purchase of FLIR cameras for apparatus. Authorize purchase of three FLIR K seventy-five systems from Delta Fire and Safety at a cost of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents.
Commissioners, this is it towards the end of the budget cycle, but those were included in the capital equipment replacement fund. These are as described in the budget and exactly as we expected for the current budget cycle.
Make the motion we authorize purchase of three FLIR K seventy-five systems from Delta Fire and Safety at a cost of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents.
And a motion by Commissioner Dominique that we authorize purchase of the three FLIR K seventy-five systems from Delta Fire and Safety at a cost of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents. Do I have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. All right. Discuss, consider and take action on the purchase of two sets of rescue tools. As soon as this clears out. From advanced rescue systems that are cost of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Somebody want to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Exactly the same style of purchase. It was planned expenses in the capital equipment replacement fund. It was exactly as planned for this budget cycle.
Did we get three quotes on that or just one or what?
Yep. The, it's related to that that's our vendor for this district, and it's a replacement of existing equipment, same brand, same concept.
I'll entertain a motion on the, uh, purchase of two sets of rescue tools.
Make the motion we purchase rescue tools from advanced rescue systems at a cost of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Dominique, have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
If, if I just may, uh, one clarification to your question. There's a sole source circumstance of these rescue tools. We're the only vendor that can sell these tools that we already have to keep it uniform. There's a designated distributor in this district, so there's no possibility of going and get three quotes for it.
Okay.
So it becomes a sole source issue.
Just, just a question.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Thank you. What about other vendors? We're trying to stay with one vendor? Is that what I'm understanding?
To make them compatible, et cetera.
Right. It keeps your batteries the same, and it's the same brand of the T O T product that you've been using.
I'm wondering, understanding that, from what I'm understanding, all of them, most rescue equipment will accept or adapt their tools to DeWalt or Makita, whatever we need.
That is correct. A lot of them have adapted it over the years, so that becomes less of a factor. That doesn't change the brand of the tool and the maintenance that comes with the tool for ongoing, continued maintenance.
All right. Item fifteen, discuss, consider and take in this or action on fire chiefs presenting and discussing issues with the board for future actions. Or Chief Hickman?
Good evening. As far as calls go, we're staying in the thirty or forty range, so it's not getting too crazy yet. Probably see an uptick coming in the fall when it gets colder weather. We had almost a hundred percent active. I had one member that wasn't active. He had a death in the family. It took him out about a week, so, uh, but he's going to meet active status this coming up month. I have two that's in training, one that's in E M T school at T J C. He's doing well in it. And one that's finishing up an instructor class. And then I had one, our new member that just started. He started his wildland class this weekend. He's trying to get it done before the Net Skills Day, which should be with the new recruit class coming up in October, so trying to get him done. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Bullard? Anybody here? Nope, nobody here. All right. Chapel Hill, Chief Peterson?
Good evening. Uh, you see, this was a slow mo for us. We're under a hundred calls this time. So I guess they're passing around to somebody else for a while. First of all, we helped at the high school again. We had the homecoming parade for at the high school. We went and helped them with that for the homecoming. In fact, I got two more scheduled for the next couple of months of helping that school. One is a career day, and the other is for, uh, the delectio for some of the kids. We're going to help out one of the schools for that as well. Uh, we also went to the Lake Tyler Association around the lake to their dinner. That was at Camp Tyler. We had guys went to that. It was a good dinner to give to us. And then also we went to, we had our triathlon here this last month for, we do for our association. And that came out, we're going to get the participation from our association as well. Then also we helped at, uh, the Bullard had their veteran day. We helped on the parade for them, for the veterans, and that was good to help the veterans out. Actually, Senator Moran was there too as well, so we got to see him. And also I had, I got one new member. It's passed his supports, and now he's starting to sign up for taking calls in the truck. So we're trying to keep his, start our deal up in time for taking calls. And then also got another new member who came on. He's right now currently working on his support, getting his NIMs and all that done, so it won't be, hopefully, by the end of this month, first part of next month, have that done, so I'll get his support going. Also, we lost one of our members to the E S D. He's going to be in the new academy. Come out of what we had, just put him through. And I got one member that has completed all her stuff through S F of May, enough to where she, you don't have to take a test now, but you can transfer it over to your commission site. So she has done her paperwork, and now she's a commissioned firefighter as well. So we got that. It's what we've been working with S F of May and commission side. In our training, we've been doing good with training. We had an E V O C class. That's where we helped some of the guys, especially ones with support. We had that in our department here this last time. So that's one of the hardest ones to get is that E V O C. So we set it up ourselves and got it going. And also we had two that went to Garrison here just last weekend for a heavy rescue class that, that's a hard class. I tried to get into them fine. We were also, we didn't get any support from the E S D because they, I guess, didn't have money or something. So we went ahead and paid it in our own pockets and make sure we, it's hard to get that class, so we went ahead and did it anyways. And also our, last month, we had a radio communication for our training. And then also I got my officer, we're going to be doing a C P R class this next month, so we get people trained up on C P R as well. And that's all we did. Any questions?
Your report says that you had a couple of people that had been waiting for some duty boots.
Yes, we got three of them. It's been over a year, and every time I get, say, I guess the vendors, they're having And every time I get, saying, I guess the vendors, they're having trouble with vendors.
Still having trouble with them?
We are, we're actually trying to, we were gonna have the vendor come in, but I think we're gonna do that for our next chief's meeting. Try to get the vendor to come in and kind of reiterate that, but it is a manufacturing problem. We've actually looked at two separate manufacturers on this, they're both having similar issues. These are related to either women's sizes, and also anything that's wide or extra wide, we have problems with. So the standard sizes, we can get in pretty quickly, but anything outside the standard is, it's an no-go. Just takes forever and ever. And the vendor keeps saying they'll be ready by a certain date, that day comes, and then they push it out again.
I'd ask that you go and try to reassess, after so much time, we gotta find a solution.
Yeah.
And our vendors aren't supporting us here, so... And I know you've probably looked at options, and I'm just asking you to look again, see if there's anything else we can do.
We are, and we're taking this seriously, in fact, me and Eric had a conversation today about this. And we'll continue to look for other avenues. It's really a manufacturing issue at this point, and so...
So out of the two that we have, how many more of them?
I think there's one more major one, so these are not like standard boots, and they're also not our structural boots. These are the Tricert boots that do wildland, station duty, and EMS. And so there's not a lot of manufacturers that have that Tricert. So I know that we have, we've worked with two, and those were the two that we did the trials on. So we may end up having to do additional trials to move that forward.
As you were saying, is there something like a shoe company or something?
Right now, we're really, it's Thorough Goods, Globe, and is it Lion, I think is what we're after. I think Lion, Hikes, Hikes. So Lion, which is the Thorough Goods, and Hikes are the ones that we're having manufacturers issues. Globes are incredibly high-priced, and I'm told that they are having the same issues with some of the odd sizes, so...
If we're trying to, if we're trying to reach three different use criteria, do those people requesting the boots need them for all three, or can we look at it? Something will fit for purpose for this particular instance, just, I'm just, I'm not...
We can look at it, yeah.
Just, something, after a year, we gotta do, we gotta take a different approach to it, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Flingression, Assistant Chief Ray?
Good evening, commissioners. I don't have a lot for you this evening. Honestly, in Flint, everything has been going well, we've got good collaboration between the career staff and the VFD. As far as our members currently, I've got one that's in paramedic school, one that's in EMT school, one new member who's in wildland training. He's actually pending the support certification, it's just been a challenge getting the CPR class. He's gonna be going to the CPR class, it's gonna be hosted at Chapel Hill on October 18th. So he'll get his support certification, and then shortly after that, hopefully we can get him through the wildland course as well. He has been responding, but unfortunately, he has to just sit at the station right now, because he doesn't have any certifications, I can't put him on a truck. We did get a TFS grant a while ago, but we finally finalized that. We bought 10,000, a little over $10,000 worth of equipment for our training facility, which is the old Flint station. Just so we can continue to build that out and use it more for the Flint Gresham Fire Department and the other departments in the county as well. The only kind of feedback that I've got right now is, we've had a little bit of challenge on communication from the support services side. Apparatus movement with no communication to anybody on the VFD side, and honestly, it sounds like nobody on the career side either. When I ask the people that are up there, they say, "We don't know where the truck went or why it went." It's just, we go in there and an apparatus is missing. And then there were some, there was a shutdown of a server that impacted our computers at the Flint station, or specifically Chief Stone's computer in his office. They shut down the server, and there was no communication that I saw about it, so Chief Stone's computer stopped working, we had to get that replaced with a regular computer. But just, you know, some communication things, I've had conversations with Mr. Locke about this before, and I know that they're working on it, but that's just kind of a little bit of feedback. Beyond that, you know, we've got, I think in that report, we had eight that were active. There's a little bit of cleanup that we're gonna do with our roster. We've got some people who aren't showing up as much as we'd like for them to, we've got one person who was kind of out in August and is coming back up again. But we're working on that part of it as well. And I think that's really all that I've got, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. White House, Chief Tate?
Good evening. I'll try to keep mine short, Dale covered a lot of what we did, kind of collectively together, between White House and Chapel Hill. So as far as events this month, we had our Labor Day boat staffing that we did. We staffed, attempted to staff all weekend, but the weather became a little bit of an issue, so we called off a day of staffing and found out that wasn't needed. We did have the Rose City Triathlon, Chief Smith and I headed that up, had a really good turnout, I will say, this year probably was the smoothest year we've ever had. Every year, we learn a little something new. I do want to give kudos to Brandon Massey from ARP, he was out on the, on the course with a side-by-side. And he's done it enough that he's kind of learned, in a triathlon, they go out the night before the triathlon, and they spray paint the road so that the runners and the bicyclists know where to go. Because a lot of these people are coming in, like, you know, some of these folks I spoke with didn't even know where White House, Texas was. Their collegiate, the coach signed them up, said, "Here's the map, go do this race." Brandon called in pretty early in the race and said, "Hey, there's some markings out here on this trail, the road don't look right." And so we notified race staff, and initially, they went, "Nope, we did that last night, everything's good." Well, Brandon called back in and said, "No, there's clearly missed markings on the road." So quickly, they were able to scramble some people out, and they found out that someone nefariously had gone through the course at some point between the time they had marked it in the beginning of the race, and had literally changed arrows in the other directions. So had Brandon not caught that, there's no telling what would have happened. Like, I don't know where the racers would have ended up, like, we didn't, you know, we probably should have just followed the arrows and figured out where they were trying to take them. But we were able to quickly get with the race officials, notify them of that problem, and they were very gracious to us for, you know, for Brandon finding that. Because it could have been, it could have been bad in some of that area. Y'all have my report there in front of you, I tried to color code it a little bit this month to help. So I've got, I believe, 19 personnel on my roster, I've got 10 active this month, I've got one that's out on medical leave due to surgery. Everyone else that is inactive is inactive because they are currently onboarding. So these are personnel that are not available to run calls at this moment. So 100% of my roster is active this month, and that's something that I mentioned to y'all a couple of meetings ago, that's a goal that I set for my department, like, if you're gonna be on the department, be active. And so that's my goal every month, is 100% activity. And so we've got a good class of folks coming up, I believe we've got eight currently onboarding. A lot of them, Dale mentioned the EVOC class. So in the last month, there's been two EVOC and two CPR classes. And so those are the two classes that are hardest for us to get for our personnel, because most everything else is online. And it just doesn't make sense for an instructor to come in and teach one student. So you wait till you get a pool of students, and you run them through there. Typically, when we set these classes up, we kind of coordinate, and we try to do two within close succession of each other, because you know that no matter what day you pick, not everybody can be there. So the goal behind doing two is that they have an option to pick one or the other, and we can get that done. That's really all I have, y'all getting questions?
Good on the, how the course is onboarding.
Yeah, we made a really hard push, I'll be honest with you, there's one or two I don't think are gonna work out. But that's what the onboarding process is about, it's about getting that information out there to them, seeing how quickly they get it returned to us as far as courses. But somebody that's, somebody that's not gonna do the work now, when I give them a list of, you know, "Hey, at your own leisure, go sit down at your computer and get these courses and get certificates to them." If they're not able to get those done in 30 to 60 days, then I'm just, I'm gonna say, you know, "Hey, thanks for your interest, but I don't think you're gonna be a fit for us." So I've got one or two that's in that boat, we'll kind of see, I don't know if they have anything personal going on in their life that's slowing them down, but, you know, I'll give them an opportunity to explain themselves, and if they're not, then, you know, we'll move forward. Thank you.
What on there, Chief Allen?
Man, we've been really busy, we've got five, I believe, in the Rust County Academy, which finishes up this month. So I believe some of them have elected to test at a later date in order to give more time for skills. But I do know two of those have already passed the academy, are waiting for their TCFP commission test. I did have one firefighter this month get his commission through TCFP, so that is definitely a highlight for him. Man, we're just here to help.
So General, closed session, may finance have an opportunity to introduce the board, our newest finance department member?
Sure.
So Amy, you want to come up here and just introduce yourself? So this is Amy Register, she is the accounts payable specialist. You go ahead, Keith.
This is, Amy's been with us about 30 days, but this has been the first board meeting that she's been able to attend like the normal. But she's doing a fantastic job, and we're thrilled to have her, and we're just, again, thrilled to have her, we're glad she's here to meet you guys in the flesh. Welcome, Amy. Yep, welcome. Thank you.
Alright. Item 16 will be closed session, the board will convene in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. No action shall be taken while the board is in closed session. Any final action, final decision, or final vote shall be taken after the board reconvenes an open session. And we are adjourned at 6:52, and ask everyone to clear the room.
He made on.
It's cool, but...
Two is like icicles.
Go outside and go out. Is it raining yet out there?
It's raining.
It's supposed to. Tonight and all through the week.
I hope so.
I need it on my yard. Plants and grass and...
Call the open session back to order at eight twenty-two P M. And item seventeen point one, discuss considering taking action on the A I A contracts for the construction of the Jamestown Fire Station approved the A I A contracts as presented and authorize the board president and treasurer to sign any related documents. I'll entertain a motion on that agenda item. Okay, you make a motion, Charles?
Yes, I do.
And a motion by Commissioner Wilson?
The second.
And a second by Commissioner Domney. Is there any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Seventeen point two, discuss considering taking action on the board of commissioners operating procedures, and I'll entertain a motion on that agenda item.
I'd like to first thank, uh, Mr. Hardy for his, uh, hard work and dedication over time, putting this together for us. I know it took a lot on your side to get this put together, but, uh, overall, I appreciate all the work that was done there. Uh, having said so, I'd make the motion that we would adopt the board of commissioners operating procedure as, uh, reviewed, uh, earlier tonight, earlier tonight.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Domney that we adopt the board of commissioners operating procedures. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any other question or discussion? And I also would thank you, John, for doing that. I know it took a lot of hard work, and I appreciate it, and thanks for answering all our questions. And, uh, so with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Item eighteen, remarks by presenting officer and/or board members. Items to be placed on future agendas and future meeting dates, times, and/or locations. So, uh, Brent, you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Charles?
Motion.
Mac?
Motion.
Okay, the only thing I got to say is we'll have our meeting next month, same time, same place. Is that right?
Fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday. Okay, all right, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may...
So may, we are adjourned at eight twenty-four. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Lieutenant Golling? Can you sign this tax abatement policy?
Yeah.
You have the approval.
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello.
You did have a good report.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Several, too, because you had me lock your office options.
So you have these for the dates where we extend on this court.
I found one over... Flexy Village. Okay. Strip there near...
Flexy and...
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
There's... Particularly around different places. One is I've looked at, but, uh...
Since we run the contract...